Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 1st Division of the Bellingham Select Board. As is our practice, we invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. As has been our practice over the last several months, we've used this forum for many ceremonies for our police and fire department. And tonight, we have a large contingent from the Bellingham Police Department. Chief, can you share the news?
Good evening. So this process started back in the fall, two triple service for promotions. And accumulated till today, we just finally got a list last week. So we're able to move forward with some long overdue promotions, fill some key vacancies in senior leadership and mid-management. So being promoted effective today, our Sergeant Steve Daigle is now Lieutenant Steve Daigle and Officer Kevin Heenan is now Sergeant Kevin Heenan, a little bit above the two. Lieutenant Daigle began his career in 2004 as a dispatcher in Bellingham. He did leave, we can't hold that against him briefly to work in Hope Dale as a police officer, but came back. He's been here ever since, since 2013. In 2015, he became a detective. I was a detective at the same time over in Foxborough. We did a couple of cases together. So I knew his skill set from then. 2018, he was promoted to sergeant. He's also been a dare officer for many years. And last July, he moved over to detective sergeant supervising the detective division and the school resource officers. He graduated Bellingham High School, had an associate's degree from Mass Bay and a bachelor's degree from Bridgewater State. And he's also been the union president for many years. Recently, it's been an integral part of basically the senior leadership team, helping be one of the key people with our accreditation process and policy updates. And reviewing all and updating all of our policies and procedures and getting everything ready for that process. He's going to be pinned tonight by his wife, Robin, and his daughters, Adeline, Ava, and Maya. And next is Sergeant Kevin Heenan. He began his career in 2015 as a police officer in Bellingham. He's been in that role ever since. He's also risen through the ranks, the Massachusetts Southern National Guard. His current position of Sergeant First Class, he's assigned to the 387th Explosive Ordnance Disposal Company. He's participated in many deployments, including Operations Noble Eagle, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Joint Guardian, as well as the Boston Marathon bombing, and has also supported the Secret Service during presidential inaugurations. Recently, Kevin was selected to be a field training officer and was one of the people responsible for helping train several of our new staff that we brought in in the fall. And he can be pinned by his wife, Becky.
Lieutenant Stephen Daigle. Congratulations on being appointed to lieutenant. And Sergeant Kevin Heenan, congratulations on becoming a sergeant. And do you both follow me square? Then we remove roles, respective roles. You will continue before your duties as a police officer for the town of Bellingham. Then you will offer charity integrity for the character of the department or the trust of the residents of Bellingham. That you will treat all individuals with dignity and respect and ensure that their actions are dedicated to ensuring the safety of the Bellingham community and the preservation of human life. That you will always hold yourself and others accountable for their actions, maintain the highest ethical standards, uphold the values of the department and the town of Bellingham, and that your actions will be bound by the charter and the laws of Bellingham and Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
We also have a citation from State Representative Mike Soder.
Kevin, join me with the students who have been reading, and you're going to give your proclamation on Wednesday. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be here known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives office sits in Sarah's. Congratulations to Stephen R. Daigle on your success promotion lieutenant. And Kevin Heenan on your promotion to sergeant for the Bellingham Police Department. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and express hope for future good fortune and continued success. Given this, and it's not an April foosled, right? Given this, the first day of April 2024, signed by Ronald Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael J. Soder, State Representative. And the great thing about this is we can AI his citation. Congratulations. It's a little special for me because I got to see Steve become a police officer in that seat. It's just unbelievable. There's a few here that I think I said to you then, it's our bright future. So Bellingham's on the rise and obviously beautiful family and
For anyone who was watching on cable eight that didn't get to see this contingent, we have a whole house of family and friends. And the vast majority of the Bellingham Police Department has turned out in support, which I think is a testament to the process. And I thank you all for what you do for the town of Bellingham.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. If you're watching via the normal cable eight, the room's going to take a few minutes to clear up. But just so we move on to the next part of the agenda so that these people are aware of what's going on. We also have established at seven o'clock at night, a citizens input session that is at seven, seven oh five. Representatives of the community who are participating can reach out to our admin team, Hillary and Hillary Alley. And request to be on the agenda. Ideally, we wish to see people tell us what they're here for. But we do take anyone who shows up unannounced to answer any of their questions. And told at this point that there's no one in attendance who is participating in the citizens import portion. So at that, in the spirit of our schedule, we move on to the seven ten portion, which is Vets Package Store. If you'd like to come up and join us up front. I believe the chief of police will be stepping back in just to be able to be part of our discussions. As I mentioned, she will, we spoke previously, obviously, it's, we had had previously done liquor store reviews where underage purchasers were canvassing the entire town. Notification of that to all of the liquor stores was provided in advance of that. I believe you acknowledged that you received that.
Correct.
The purpose of this is to be consistent with what has occurred in previous years. It's been seven or eight years since we had done this under the previous police chief. And mistakes happen. So when the case of your situation. Chief, I don't know if you want to jump in or if you just want to describe what happened in your instance, and we can just move from there.
I will actually let Lieutenant Daigle give the details because he was the, was his operation.
So while you were finishing up, I just mentioned that we were consistent with what we had done several years ago. And that as a procedural move, we invite the liquor store in question into come before the board. So I can say, Lieutenant Daigle, would you like to give us the details?
Sure. So basically, this was a operation that occurred back on the 31st of January. I had a, an underage participant come along with us. And we went to just about every liquor establishment in the town. He had instructions to enter, select an item, select an alcoholic beverage, bring it to the counter. If they were asked for identification, we just said, left it at R and walked out. If they weren't, they made the purchase and brought it out and handed it over to me. All the establishments, Vets was the one that ended up making the sale. So after that had occurred, I went in, I spoke to Sir Ramalart about what had happened and let him know that there would be a hearing or a some type of action with the board down the road.
Undersee of the owner of the facility.
Yep.
Okay. In previous cases, it was non-owners, it was employees. In some cases, the individual subsequently did not work for the establishment or the establishment let the individual continue. I think it's pretty cut and dry that it was a one-off mistake. But obviously, we'll stick with you as the case may be. Any questions from the board if you'd like to continue?
Okay, I just, Mr. Ramler, do you have the scanner?
I do not.
You do not. I think worth your while to, I know it's an investment and it's not an inexpensive one. But most of the liquor stores and the new ones that are opening now do have them. And I think they're worth your weight in gold.
Wait, I, in the past 10 months, I believe you've taken I probably would make seven big ideas on the street because it was a chicken eat wherever the bird M L is. It's not as shiny as it should be. So it's just an easy cut and dry. We keep it daily. So in that regard, but yes, I should perhaps invest in a scanner.
Just for your own sake.
Yeah.
For your own.
We had discussed with the previous establishments, a roll up of that. In fact, in those previous instances, it became mandatory to purchase them as part of a condition of their license. We've had some discussion.
Feel like I was just there.
You could talk about the bids and you've been on the roads committee. So maybe the dialogue would be more.
They're right. So they're all this morning, you know.
Going to Herbert timing.
Absolutely. I'll turn the floor over to you, Jesse.
Fantastic. So Bellingham's paving project for 2024 was anticipated for North Main from the town center to approximately Hartford Avenue. We estimated preliminary cost for this would be somewhere between 1.25 and 1.7 million dollars. We did open bids for this project on the 14th. They came in very favorable. We were able to do both the base and the alternate for about half of what we were expecting. So it was very good to see, you know, very competitive bidding process. So what we have tonight of the 11 bids, PJ Keating was the low bid for this project. I will say that this notice or this agreement would be based upon or contingent upon funding at town meeting. So a part of this is going to rely on the appropriation of the 200,000 in the operating budget as well as the 500,000 capital request. Now, when we originally came forward with this, the anticipation was that, you know, 1.7 to do this project. And as a result of bids coming in lower, we anticipate discussing with the roads committee additional streets to pave this year. So these would be in addition to North Main Street for this appropriation.
What is the ultimate one bid?
The alternate one. So we weren't sure how expensive this was going to be after COVID. Prices were a bit higher. So the alternate was done in a way to pave a portion of North Main and the alternate would stretch it to complete the project. So it kind of broke apart in the event that we couldn't do the entire stretch of North Main Streets.
The big award, Mr. Chairman, would be to awards subject to appropriation. I know the concern was the funds haven't been appropriated yet. But in the bid, they did specifically state that there's 120-day whole period for the bid. So what we could do is go ahead and award this subject to appropriation at county and contractor knows good faith that the town is pursuing funding for the project.
Someone like to read that.
Yeah. Subject to. Mr. Chair, I moved at the contract 2024. N M P North Main Street, Wallway Mill and Paving be awarded to the low bidder PJ Keating, company of London, Massachusetts.
Subject to town meeting.
Subject to town meeting.
For the first, second, first and second. Is any further discussion, seeing and hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Fantastic. The second item that we have for paving is going to be our contract 2024 WMRV. Now, this project is following water, our main replacements on Cedar Hill and Standish. We did this last year. Time has gone by to let the road settle and go through the process now of soliciting this to pave this as well. So the funding source for this is different. This is through Opera availability. This was something that we were able to, or is something that we're able to go forward with immediately, if agreed upon tonight.
Mr. Chair, I moved at the contract 2024 WMRV. Wallway Resurfacing, 2023, Water Main Streets be awarded to the low bidder. AF Amarillo Sons Incorporated of Houston, Massachusetts.
First and second. Is any discussion, seeing and hearing on all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Or zero?
Fantastic. And so everybody is aware, we did have a contract lined up last year for a Cape Seal project that would address several rooms throughout Bellingham. Due to the timing and the availability, I'm sorry, the contractor, we were unable to proceed last year. So we do anticipate this taking place this year. Roads include Bellstone Drive, Peasant Hill Road, Harshoe Trail, David Road, Joyce Lane, Pearl Streets, Walter Morse Road, Saddleback Hill Road, Prospect Streets, and Fox Run Road. So that's a Cape Seal project. There's no need to make a motion tonight on this. Just so everybody is aware that we do anticipate this road we're going on this year. Similar to a chip seal project, the initial product is going to be a bit worse than something like a Millen pave. However, the end results will have a micro seal finish. So it will be rough for a bit of time, but the final result would be smooth, similar to what we would expect from the Millen pave. So we will send out notification before this starts so the public is aware that it's more of a two-stage process.
If you recall about eight years ago, I don't think you were here, Jesse.
It was just before my time.
Before your time. We did wide-scale chip sailing throughout town and treated a lot of disruption. It was very dusty. When cars drove down the street, there was a lot of chips peeling up from the road. It was done the way it was supposed to be done, but people weren't too pleased, especially with the dust. This process does essentially the same thing, but then puts a seal on top of it. Much like Franklin used a similar process right around the same time that we did ours. So it may be disruptive for a day or two or three, and then once the final seal's down, it should, it should be in good shape. But last time, it was a lesson learned. It was very disruptive. And I think you recall, we had quite a few complaints in the streets of the town also. This is a much cleaner process.
So we fully intend to send out plenty of literature on this to the public informed. Because as Dennis had mentioned, it's similar to begin with, but the final product will be, you know, much more smooth product. I think it will get a much better response as a result. And the idea behind this is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a less involved process that will allow us to do more trees than we would with something like a Millen pave where it's more involved, more costly, things of that nature. And so that's the idea behind it.
But anything about the roads committee meeting this morning or?
No, I think that's what we went through this morning and then we looking at it. So Jesse is putting a list together, you know, the what roles, what roles needs to be attended on a first base. Yep. So we actually, he's in the process, you know, to get some of the old list and the new list. And then, you know, maybe we might do some survey down the road and get a proper analysis for the process. And hopefully we'll get around it as quickly as possible. And just basically, you know, this is going to give us a good data and to figure out what's going on in our roads as well as main roads, side roads, back roads, anything you can imagine, you know, so we'll probably get around it. I don't know. It's close to May. Is that what we said, Jesse?
Yes. So we hope to meet one more time to discuss about a week and a half. And then we hope to combine the two lists as I had mentioned. We essentially had 100 worst roads, but also a list from 2022 that was somewhat active at that time. So we want to revisit and make sure.
And also, one of the things that actually, you know, Jesse was mentioning that also we discussed it. Just maybe look through the details and then it's on the roads and then how they resurface. And actually, how the finished product is going to be. And then we won't have any problems, you know, it's a couple of years down the road. So actually, this is Jesse's got pretty detailed data and he's gathered it together. So just hopefully, you know, once we fix the roads, you know, we don't have to go back and retouch them in three to five years or so. Yeah. Thank you, Jesse.
Appreciate you, man.
One other thing, just while you're here, attracted a lot of attention, the signals that we put in on Senate Street. Jesse was successful in acquiring a grant to do it on Lake Street as well. Maybe you just touch on that quickly.
Absolutely. So yeah, we had the opportunity to apply for a grant that would put in the rapid flashing beacons for the Snet Trail Crossing. We were successful. There is a small match, 20% match by the town. But essentially, all the work is proposed to take place within the town's right of way. So not only the beacons, but also the cross mark paintings to ensure certain particular residents that are using the trail system.
That's in such a tough area that much advanced notice that you can get of that is appreciated and a lot of people will continue on the trail. Yeah, first time.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you all.
It was easy tonight.
Yeah.
Marano members, let's go. We are ahead of schedule. If you'd like to wait, we can, but I'm sure you'd love to come up and get it over with. Good evening.
Eric is our director of finance.
We have a thing here.
Yes. That's your daytime glossary.
So we're going to share with you our FY25 budget. That, so I just want to talk first about our annual budget that serves as an actual representation of our goals and priorities set forth by the school department. So it doesn't just represent the financial framework of our programs. It also reflects our various challenges and priorities that that we use to, you know, they're inherent in the operation of a school system. So we have a tremendous amount of unfunded mandates. We have requirements from the Department of Ed, from the state, that there's a multitude of areas we have to continually monitor as we develop our budget, along with other things. Just real quick, how we create our budget. We start with some research. We look at, we ask each department to look at their budget, look at their needs. You know, per student data, and then also for the schools to work through their school improvement councils or their school councils to determine what their priorities are. We analyze that data along with data from the state and some historical information. And then as a leadership team, we review all the budgets, all the requests. And then we actually look at areas that we can support, and we also look at areas that we can reduce it. Sometimes their programs or positions that just aren't filling the needs that we have. So we'll make reductions in those areas, just again, to be physically responsible. And then finally, we present our budget to the school committee, which we're doing next Tuesday for their approval. And also, we'll be presenting to FinCom next Monday. And then we'll be at the town meeting for their full approval. Just so you know, we have a strategic plan. And we base all of our decisions on our budget based on our five pillars. So we have academic excellence, communication, culture and climate, social emotional wellbeing and technology use and implementation. So when any of the department heads or principals create their budget, whatever their asks are, align with one of these pillars. There has to be alignment within our strategic plan, or else it's not considered as a request. For me, it's really important because I think that's how we really ground our requests into, you know, some real, you know, good solid plans. If we don't have our plan, if they're not using the plan, then they're just requests and it doesn't meet our vision or our mission. So everything is tied to our strategic plan. Quickly, our enrollment. It's fluctuated in the past. So from 16 over to 2020, we did see a reduction. We're pretty steady right now. We're on 1922. This is in line with the NASDAQ studies that I've done in the past. That's the New England School Development Council. They'll do an enrollment study for us every year because we're members. And we're pretty much on target with what they're predicting. When they do their enrollment study, they look at not just our current school enrollment, but they'll go back and look at how many births were there, how many developments are there in town? And what does that translate into school enrollment? So right now, we're on a steady pace. I will say in the next, based off their projection in the next 10 years, they're projecting us to be around 1,600 students. So they're seeing a continued reduction in student population.
Even with all the development.
Yeah, even with all the development. So, you know, the apartments that were built on 140, I think maybe we saw maybe, maybe 30 kids, you know, and that's a multitude of apartment buildings there.
What do you project with the MBTA communities that we are dealing with?
How, what we'll receive for?
Yeah.
We're going to do another enrollment study in the fall. Again, I'm not, I don't anticipate a huge increase in student population. This area of the country is seeing a reduction across the board. There's only a handful of communities in the area, Hopkinton being one, that's seen an increase. And that increase has been around 100, 200 students over the last three or four years. Everyone around us is seeing a reduction, whether it's here, Franklin, Medway, it's the trend. Just to give you a little bit of a flavor of what we're seeing in students that are leaving us. So our Volk School Volk School students, we have right now currently 106 students that are attending a Volk School. That is Blackstone Valley Tech, but also Tri County. And we have a student that attends Asabet Valley. So 106 kids. I will say that this year, we had 28 students who applied to Blackstone Valley. So a hundred and six kids. I will say that this year, we had twenty eight students who applied to Blackstone Valley Tech and only thirteen were accepted. The last three years, so four years ago, we had fifty students who were applying to the Volk Schools. It's gone down to into the twenties. So. I attribute that to our innovative path, innovative pathway programs that we've developed there. Uh I was actually at the school today and they're doing some scheduling meetings with students. And they have a multitude of kids who are are looking to take those those courses and go through the pathways. Health science is a biggie right now, so it's very exciting.
Do you do you communicate this with BBT and and the other schools?
That like, you know, what you what you just said to us.
You know, our numbers are going down because we're operating this. Is I mean, is that known to the the trade schools?
Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, yeah, cuz I'm part of the Blackstone Valley Tech Group Consortium of Schools and Superintendents, so we meet monthly and it's been a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh we've seen a huge increase in charter schools uh since um. Two thousand nineteen twenty, so we're at a hundred and seventy eight students currently attending the charter schools.
Is that mostly Franklin?
Yeah. Yeah. And then school choice has been hovering around the last two years around a hundred. Uh so it's nice to see a little bit of reduction from twenty one, twenty two. Uh one twenty five to one oh one and this year one oh seven.
Excuse my ignorance, cuz that's all this is. I'm gonna chalk it up to what is the the charter school? Like, what what drives the people to the charter schools?
Well, I I did do a uh. A quick kind of uh analysis with some parents and. I- it varies from, you know, they like the programming to they like their core values to they just like the opportunity to be in the in the charter school setting. Um so it depends on each family. Um I don't typically get to meet with them because they're getting. They're going there in kindergarten, right? So they're preschool and then they're heading over to kindergarten and there's no like uh. Opportunity for me to to meet with them beforehand, same. This is what we have. But um they're welcome to come back anytime.
Where are most of them going after eighth grade? Are they coming into the high school or are they making decisions to go? To the tech school?
Funny, this year I had, uh I think I had four or five who are looking to go to Tri County. Uh some go to the uh the school model, the advanced maths uh science, yep. Maybe a handful come back to district. Most of them go to Amza or some other private school.
Where BBT is our. Designated tech school, you see a change in focus when Tri County finally builds into school? Like you think more people try to go there?
So the only way a student go to Tri County is if they are applying to a program that BBT doesn't have. Um so we see a lot of students apply to Tri County that look for metal fabrication or early childhood. I'd say a lot, it's, you know, I have maybe this year, I think I had five or six students who applied. Um and and a handful of the apart from the charter school. I I don't know what their plans are for their new building. Uh and they could be expanding a lot. Um I know that they're. They need to fill their spots for their member districts first. So we'll see how that all plays out. You're up next. I have the easy part.
Yeah, I have my number five. So the budget reductions for our expenditures total two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred dollars, as you can see. Some of these reductions we made to accommodate the budget request for twenty five were made through a collaborative team effort. With Mrs. Rafferty and Ms. Michelle. Reviewing professional development and curriculum needs and adjustments to our special education opportunities. We did not make any reductions at the school levels.
Can I just say real quick, there's two power professionals that we have here uh that were in our budget. Those were. Safe placeholders. Um so we had a hard time a couple of years back filling those power roles. So we would have to go out to an agency and the agents are typical power professional was making between twenty six and thirty thousand per year. The um these the uh agencies would charge us seventy thousand per per para. So we needed the support. We had to go out and and go through an agency, but this year we're we're moving that out of our budget.
So are you still filling those or?
We're 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 actually gonna be cutting some of those positions that are non-filled. Um but we we feel we're at a pretty good place with our paras. We we made some adjustments to the power professional job description. Um through negotiations and we're comfortable with some reductions of non-filled positions for for next year.
So you're comfortable with it? It's gonna be enough what you guys have?
Yes.
This is not gonna be getting annoying on the program soon or soon.
Uh salaries. So the reductions we made on a high level scale. Um are twelve point three FTEs. The positions that we reduced were mostly unfilled positions. Three point three of these full-time equivalencies are being transferred from the operating budget. To our revolving accounts to alleviate the overall request.
Again, some of those positions were new positions that were needed based on the pandemic. Wanted to create some class sizes, uh again, some additional supports through special education and through Paris. So again, not needing them going forward makes sense.
The budget additions that we need for salaries are a total of seven FTEs, full-time equivalencies. Um of the seven, four are new positions that we're looking to bring into the district. And the other three. Um were increased hours and positions that were being maintained by Esser funding. So we chose to bring them into the budget and keep them.
So the English position at the high school is super important. We have a lot of students who want to take additional English electives and it'll help reduce some of the English class sizes. Enrollment at DHS right now is at seven sixty, uh eight through twelve. Um also, it gives us the ability to offer an additional AP class in history, so it's gonna be like a split role, humanities role. We're asking for two assistant principals, one at Stalberg and one at DePetro. Uh we did have a a. Preschool director at the beginning of the year who resigned and we. Were managed to get through the year without a preschool director, but it gave us an opportunity to look at our programming pre-K to three. And the two assistant principals at those elementary schools will help us to to now absorb the pre-K into the overall program of the elementary school when it's beneficial. Um and it gives us additional uh opportunities for um. Evaluation of teachers, it just raises up the principles, do more of the work in the classroom that's that is needed. Um the clinical psychologist, again, is to provide extra support for students who need who need that. We have a currently it's a point five position. We want to make that a one point O. Our L directors currently point five, uh that increase. So our L population is. Doubled in the last three years. We're at over a hundred and four students and just three years ago, we were fifty. Or forty. So once you pass a hundred, um you're now required to have some additional layers per the state. Of support. So one point O position is of the director position is important. Also see there's an additional L teacher there. That that increase really is, we have. Uh our model is kind of. Teacher and tutors. We're gonna consolidate three three tutor positions, use that money to hire a teacher. We feel that the teacher can provide more more support um in the schools and this is, I believe this position is for Stalberg because they're seeing the biggest increase. And then an internship coordinator, we've talked about this before, that was through Esser, that's our uh pathways program. So again, very important and an adjustment counselor at BMS to support social mobility. Any any questions on those reductions, the additions?
I would just comment, the internship program that you have is phenomenal and the the kids are regularly talking about it. They're finally on a schedule where. Their planning for their internships as opposed to. Trying to grab them at the last minute because they wish they had done something in advance and scheduling is coming on, so.
If you hear from from the kids about the internships they're experiencing, it's phenomenal. I mean, they're getting real world opportunities. And you name it everywhere, you know. And it's just, it's exciting to see it, you know, I'm a firm believer in students having that opportunity to go and and. Relate what they're learning in school and to, you know, the real world. When you can marry those two, kids just do better, right? Because they understand why they're going to school.
Yeah.
Collectively, can you put a number on on which of a would only use the term burden, but strain on the budget ELL becomes. Having seen that number get doubled.
So it's not, yeah, I don't wanna affirm it as a burden. I mean, I I it's. We have to follow the the requirement from the state. On the number of Ls that we have.
Yep.
Um so. You know, if we were a low, I think we're still we're in a low incident. Category. You know, we may have stayed with maybe some tutors at the schools, but again, I I we probably would have moved moved to the teacher anyways. Uh it just there's more value in in that position. Yeah, I mean, if it, I anticipate that it's gonna it'll continue to grow and we'll have to keep, you know. Add positions as we move forward. We, there's a whole spectrum of students that come in. They could be non-native language speakers and we have other students that come in and. You know, can speak the language. We have to test them all. We have to monitor them all. Uh even when they um graduate from the program, they're still monitored periodically periodically through the through their. I think it's three years. So there's a whole gamut of things that have to happen to those students. We just had a presentation to the school committee from our current L director who did a great job of explaining the whole process and it's it's quite comprehensive.
And one of the things that she said about school committee meeting was in September, which was. Eight months ago, there were eighty students. We're already at one oh four.
You you see the situation of we we have a multitude of apartments where students come into the district and then end up moving out. Are we seeing a a trend that um? The students are staying with us?
Uh there are some.
Too early to tell.
Yeah, I think it's still early to tell. I mean, I think some of the students are moving. To stay middle because they have a much more robust program there. You know, they have like fifteen hundred kids that are else. Uh or more. I I think it's, you know, I think we need to, we'll track it as we. Continue through. Uh it's still, you know, pretty early, like Erica said, it's just just in September, we're already eighty students and now we're at hundred and four. So our L direct, current L director monitors that and is in touch with families. Because we've gone past a hundred, uh we have to, we're required to create a, they call it an LPAC, just like there's a special education parent advisory council. Now we have to create an. An English language learner advisory council, so that's something we'll have to create for next year. To try to engage those families and being part of our school community. The questions are. No, you're not.
How much of a strain is it? How much of a strain is it to draw on the special ed reserve versus the intent to build on it because? We're we're allowed to have a certain percentage in that account and. That was only set up a few years ago to draw it down.
Yeah, so the next slide.
So these are some additional staffing notes to support some of the things that we just outlined. Um we are able to support three additional power positions through our IDEA grant. Um so we're able to take those positions from the operating budget. We'll also be able to support two preschool paras and a point three full-time equivalency. BTA position through our preschool revolving accounts. Um we are seeking approval from the school committee and select board to utilize our special ed reserve. To support three existing BTA positions. We would utilize the operating budget first. Um and look to increase our KMA, KMA, Keel Memorial Academy enrollment. If the operating and revolving accounts cannot continue to support these positions, we would at that time. Request a one-time transfer, but we are going to. Use the operating budget first and that's a last ditch effort.
Yeah, so we're looking at other opportunities to reduce. You know, and and or increase so we can pull in additional students at KMA. That'll help offset that two seventy six.
What does that timing look like? Because it and I say this from the. Being near to the board, it takes both the school committee and the select board to release those funds. If it's something that we don't have to do until January of twenty five. Is that a just, that is like presumably a decision that we could say our new growth is significantly above and we don't have to go into this. Correct?
It's possible.
I mean theoretically, it's not something we have to do for July one.
No, 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 you cuz you can re-release those funds whenever we come to you. I think we want to look within our budget first as long as we can to try to, you know, again, increase the enrollment at KMA. That'll get help offset it. Uh for a student to attend KMA out of district, it's it's fifty thousand per student. So a few kids brings that amount up. And then, you know, any additional budget reductions, looking at transportation costs uh through our vendor to see if there's the opportunity to reduce a bus. Uh that's about an eighty thousand dollar savings. So we're gonna look at those pieces first and then come to you if we're in in the pitch. Again, trying to be fiscally responsible and if utilizing our revolving accounts. Smartly. You know, so we can meet the needs of our budget.
So you said that that might happen off to July?
Oh, definitely. With the start of the year, we're not even going to consider it at that point.
Okay. Want to put her on your radar. Okay.
Yeah, apply chart. Um this is just a picture overview, a pie chart to um. Show you where the percentage of the um. Budget is being allotted to. Not a surprise that seventy percent is salaries. Um in this chart, we are showing that six percent is district operating costs. But I will add that in that district operating cost, we also have stipends, which are technically salaries. So the true cost for salaries is more like seventy two percent. And the operating cost for the district is about four point six. As you can see, special ed has the next biggest percentage, also not a surprise. And transportation, as Dr. Marano indicated, we are looking to try to reduce a bus because that's. More than a salary. It's about ninety thousand dollars. And we are also looking to alleviate transportation costs by using some of our um. P's that we are asking for. So the total budget for twenty four is thirty three million, four hundred ninety one thousand, seven hundred ninety one. The increase that we're asking for is. One million, four hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty five.
In that it was programmed into.
The the two previous slides, uh two summary slides, just goes through each department and. Where they were for twenty four and twenty five, the school budgets. The principal did ask for some increase. That brings them back to some pre-pandemic money, uh pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic spending levels. Uh especially since we've purchased a new curriculum, a new mill and a map. There's some consumables that they need and we wanted to make sure that they can. Continue with those. Just things I want to put up there as future considerations as we work through the budgets down the down the road. You know, contractual increases are always, uh you know, the biggest drivers for our increase. Between our BTA and Aspen contrast, uh increase in special ed costs, I'll tell you quickly. That our out of district costs have gone up almost twenty percent in the last two years and that we have no control over that. So out of district schools. Were given the okay by the department head, the Department of Ed to increase their their costs. So. By year one, it was fourteen percent and this year was another five percentage. So that's a big, that's a big hit. Uh transportation costs, obviously, chapter seventy, um you know, that formula I wish worked in our favor a little bit more. You know, reduction in grants as. You know, if there's issues at the state level, it could impact our grants. Uh revolving accounts, those while we're, you know, utilizing some of those funds, I want to be cautious that. You know, totally expend those either because then that'll give us, that'll be a hard push to. You know, totally expend those either because then that'll give us, that'll be hard for us to continue and then our charter school costs and reimbursement is always a challenge. I get except for those. Or the way I would envision it to work.
It's safe to say that the post-COVID era, that those funds have been bridged and. Programs that were put in place that we are either continuing because they were worthwhile or have been eliminated because the funding's not there.
Correct. So I feel like we were incredibly smart with our COVID monies. Um, we didn't bury. A lot of positions into the COVID funds, uh, because you'll see districts around us have and now they're in some serious financial problem. And any positions that we had in the COVID funds, we either moved forward or we didn't because we didn't feel like we could support them. Yeah, I mean, we spent most of the money on curriculum, opportunities for students to get extra, extra help, summer programs. Vacation programs for kids coming to get tutoring. So that's where a majority of our money's went.
And BTA contract is up at the same time as all of our other contracts.
Yes, BT and ASME, we're both going. We'll do something similar for Pincon next week and we'll actually have budget clips ready for them by the end of this week.
Thank you. School committee members to join us.
Uh, getting back on schedule, our other business. Is a procedural vote. Send Article One Special Town Meeting Article presented by petitioner Steve Goyette back to the planning board review and according to Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight. Section five and the planning board procedural is section two point one. Dennis, would you add any additional color to the process?
No, I think Hillary is is much better suited than you guys. She's been the gatekeeper on this and does a great job. It's very confusing.
It's very confusing. Um.
But we have it.
Essentially, it's the select board um accepting the article, putting it on the warrant. And now sending it back to the planning board for them to do their review in their public hearing. Um, and it's a procedural thing. It's Mass General Law and it's a planning board procedural thing that. Um, we got caught on a couple of years ago and um KP Law has been really good about explaining what we need to do and. This is what we need to do and we need to vote to send it back to the planning board.
Yeah, we actually had a matter that had passed at town meeting, went to the attorney general's office, eventually it was appealed. Um, by people that agree by the decision, it was a zoning matter and we hadn't followed the process and the vote was thrown out. So it's important that we, we we follow this. It had never been challenged before. We had never done it before, but now we make sure that we too.
I think what we've learned is ideally, if this was part of the. Uh, June or fall town meeting that we would have had. An appropriate amount of time, but forty-five day window is putting an undue burden on the process to balance it back and forth rather.
Exactly. It's it's putting a lot of pressure on the planning board. Because they have to advertise it two consecutive weeks and then do a public hearing after sending it to us for us to send it back to them.
There was a question about whether they had to send it to a butters, but the butters technically are.
When it's zoning, when it's not a land, when it's not like a used zone, it's um, you just have to send the butters to the neighboring towns.
Okay.
Did we get an opinion from my KP law? It's it's a. I I don't just say.
What what opinion on the article? No, when it's a private petitioner, um, we leave the article as is. We don't ask them for any recommendation on the way the article was written. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So relative to procedurally amendments, can they be brought to the floor and the petitioner has to agree to it or how does that?
Um, let me just take a look at the motion. The article does not say or act to do anything in relation there too, so therefore it goes.
It's an up or down.
It's up or down.
Uh, so no amendments can be offered on the floor?
Well, um, certainly, uh, they could be, but then it's subject to whether or not the attorney general is willing to. Um, will willing to approve them or not.
But because of that, does it doesn't need to ping pong go back between the planning board and the select board?
No, 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 nothing can be changed on on this. The only way this can be changed. Is is someone were to make a motion at a town meeting and I don't even know that that would be in order since it doesn't say or act to do any. Thing in relation there too. This is an upper down vote.
So if such an amendment were to be offered, the moderator would just note it as out of order?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, that's something that the moderator will have to, you know, make a call on. We'll certainly have that conversation, but yeah.
Okay. So. We have specific language?
Read that right, what I have on the um. The agenda.
Okay, so where I read it, would anyone like to so move? And seconded, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Ours none, four zero. Vote on the minutes of March eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth as. For agenda.
First and seconded, further discussion, seeing that none, all's in favor, say aye. Ours none. Do we have any old business? Relative to new business, I asked uh the police chief to join us to. Recap a meeting that was held on Friday at the police station by the selection committee for the architects for the station. And uh, since it was within the the window, it's falling under new business chief.
Good evening. So we had, um, this is relative to the locker room situation. We had uh. Fourteen or fifteen firms come out to. Look at the the in-person meeting they're allowed to ask questions, take pictures, that sort of thing. We got, I believe, eight actual packets proposals. Um, the committee, which included the chairman, myself, Lieutenant Russell, Sergeant Padula, who spent twenty years in private construction. Uh, Joe and Roland from Capital and Finance. And Tim and Dennis went through the uh packets. We narrowed it down to three. What we thought would be good finalists and one alternate. We brought in the three finalists, heard the three presentations, pretty very. Big dynamic di- difference in the in the companies. One was from Brooklyn, one was from Cambridge, one was local from Whitemsville. Local in Whitemsville had a little less experience, particularly related to public safety. But seemed much more responsive and much more interested in our project and they had a wealth of experience. Relative to locker rooms and facilities and all that, it just, they're trying to break into the public safety space. So uh, we ended up a lot of discussion with them and I think it was pretty much unanimous decision. Everyone said the. We like these folks and they're local, they're from Whitemsville. So first was trying to get ahold of somebody at a multi, you know. Hundred million dollar firm in Cambridge that where that literally told us, well, this is a tiny project. Well, a tiny project to a three or four hundred million dollar company, it's not a tiny project to the, you know, town where, you know, could represent. Ten, twelve percent of the free cash, something like that. So um, so that's where we came up with the company's name is Turva and. They they don't know. I assume they're not the IT department, but uh, they don't know they're the ones that we have selected yet, but uh, we wanted to come here. Let the board know, make sure everyone was good with us making that decision. I'm gonna uh notify them, let them know that they're our. Our pick and we'll let everyone else know, you know, but thanks for your efforts, that sort of thing.
Procedurally, this committee was established as a result of the board voting. Uh, so we thought it appropriate to just come back to the board with that information before it was made public and. Um, whether it was required to have a vote or whether the committee had that.
Yeah, typ- typically the committee would have to, but I think it's appropriate since it was ad hoc to bring it back to the select board. For for a vote. I I think obviously we've done his due diligence and and I I I think it's a. You know, within the budget and we get this project moving.
So if you could just recap the amount of money that was uh, the original project that was fifteen percent and.
So the original project, um, I had done a couple of projections and there's the. And this company, another thing that they did that we thought was interesting was they actually already gave us this upfront. And said, it, what you wanted, here's what it looks like. With no other changes, no one, no nothing, he he here's what you asked for, here it is on paper. Um, so that was, that was actually nice to see. They'd already taken the time to 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 put out a design. So the RFP, um, uh, Mr. Di Martino put that out for me. And he had put two fifty. I had asked him to put it at three hundred. I don't know where um, he got two fifty from. But I had based the fifteen percent ARPA money on three hundred thousand dollar project. So we got just about forty-five thousand. I think it's forty-four change from ARPA. So I still think it's still three hundred's a more comfortable number. I think two fifty was a really, really lean number. And particularly with a piece of space uh next to the locker room that we think we can capture at the same time. That will solve a lot of long-term needs and relatively inexpensively. I I I think. Think at the end of the day, the the burden of the town's a three hundred thousand dollar project. Obviously, the ARPA funds have come from elsewhere, so that doesn't come out of um. Out of town money. So I I I think that's a good number. This architecture firm already told us. They think that for two fifty, they could do everything we asked for. I just think that that little bit of cushion, but the cushion may be that. They already got a design on paper. I don't, I don't foresee them spending forty-four thousand dollars to. Design what they weren't designed. So there may be some ARPA money left over there too, that I don't know how we can move it from A to B, from one part to the other, but. If we don't spend it all, if we can put it towards a project, I'm sure there's a way that we can.
So similar to like the North Main Street project where it was all one.
Yeah.
Uh, they came up with a design that kept the plumbing intact, but. Uh, as flow goes, it may be appropriate to reimagine some of the walls, which would add some additional cost as as an alternate and still remain within the budget, which. Uh, they have acknowledged and and didn't see a problem, so.
Yeah, they they told us they'd give, they could show us two or three different options, basically the cheapest bare bones option, fix immediate issue or. Spend a little bit more and capture an extra, extra, you know, restroom facility or extra sink or something for long, more long-term uh things.
That that that's my question. I mean, I I don't want to.
Oh, I don't want to put a band-aid. I really don't.
It makes more sense to go with. Where the radio tower is uh and manage that, which.
I think it's more important to do it so that we have a little leeway to move around. I mean.
What they showed us so far, and this was a very preliminary, you know, here's a free little sketch. Uh, was fourteen lockers in the female side and gaining five on the male side, bringing that to, I believe. Forty-one or forty-two, I think, or I think it was a net gain of five on that. So it's a net gain of twelve total. Uh, and I think there's more that can be done with that. Um, and there was also talk of it. The sky is the limit, it, you know, just what's the limit of the money, obviously, is the question, but. Um, and one thing I was talking to the DPW director about, that's interesting is our uh, our men's facility, for example, has uh. One toilet, one urinal, one sink. And his has four toilets and two sinks. So and during the day, we have a similar number of staff. Working with that number of facilities. Never mind, we have also obviously the round-the-clock staff, but at night there's less people, but during the day. We have a lot of people and there's, there's, there's no wiggle room and and the ladies have one restroom facility, one shower. So it's it's certainly something that if we can tag on an extra toilet on each side, an extra shower, an extra sink, something. It'll make it a lot more comfortable over the next, you know, ten, fifteen years.
But it's just silly to not do it. And give you the space that you're going to need and do a little bit of a future. It it just makes more sense.
Uh, and as far as the timeframe goes, uh, they were comfortable that they would be able to bring the. Dollar amount to fall town meeting of twenty-four. If we act tonight and.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was, there were two options that they they could see this project being done. In uh, uh, one version was.
May.
In May and one was August of twenty-five next year. So less than, around a year, a one-year project from kind of inception to. It being done, so.
So then my question is, while we go through this process, you know, are you gonna be okay with the locker room situation? So what's coming down the pipeline?
Just like they actually will pull up, one option is to put a trailer next to it where they would use the trailer.
There's a portable trailer that, you know, some leasing company has that has two entrances and. You know, like you go to a wedding somewhere, they have the the trailer bathrooms. This is a trailer locker room.
They used to use them in Boston while they go through that um project, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
They recognize it's a secure facility, so you. Close up and you open up the walls of the building.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a disruption. They they seem to think that the actual disruption to people would be three to four weeks. Basically, there'd be about a month where they'd have to be, they they said it's it's not a big project. It's a pretty straightforward, but. The actual time where most of the locker room's inaccessible, it sounds like it'd be about a month. If assuming everyone stayed on schedule, shows up on time, does what they're supposed to do, subcontractors and all that, it seems to be.
What I would add is the process, though the project has a lot of, doesn't take a problem for the situation, but we do not have enough parking. At that location for shift changes, uh, that means.
That's, that's a lower, that, the good thing with that is I think that's a lower cost. That's a low-cost fix. DPW, you can do a lot. There there's a lot that can be done relatively low cost in that, in that realm.
The only action is the award of the uh contract to.
The RBA from Whitemsville.
And second, oh, yeah.
First and seconded and further discussion, seeing that all is in favor. Ours nine is. The Hillary note the funding source.
ARPA funds.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, people.
You're welcome, chief. Thank you.
So one other question on the new business, um. Is there a way to quantify what our true population is? Because we were discussing some of that at Friday's session, like the numbers.
Town clerk should have it.
But that is based on a census.
That's based on the census, but that's your most accurate.
Right, but knowing that we have X amount of development, then an apartment that goes in for the Curtis is going to have an average of. Whatever that is, one point, something, two point one. The question is.
They're only gonna get, you're, they they, the only way to get a a good. Number is, is to take what the census from this year.
Also accurate census, and this is the federal census.
Was just done in, uh, I think it was done in twenty, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or just a question.
Um, meetings. So we only have, um. So in May, we only have one meeting scheduled right now and it's scheduled for May, um. Six. And I think we originally did that, I think, before realizing the elections were in June. So uh, my question to you is, can we put another meeting on the schedule for May? It would probably be May twentieth. Which is a Monday, it's the third Monday. May twenty-seventh is the, is Memorial Day, so it's the Monday before that.
Town meeting of the election is.
And um, town meeting is May twenty-second, though, that's the only thing. So is that too much in? I would don't give that too much in one week.
May twenty-second is town meeting. I would say we should be able to a meeting on Monday.
On behalf of, we can't get rid of it, so it'd be nice, I'm just, alright.
Asking about maybe.
So can we do May twentieth? And town meetings may twenty-second, so just want to run that by you. Okay, and then the next question is, so election is June fourth.
We currently have a meeting on June third.
Right, so are we, are we doing that or no?
I know, but it makes noise. It drives me crazy.
The question really becomes if the election is the fourth, that we want to have a meeting on the tenth as the closest date or the. I think we'd probably be wrapped up on the twentieth.
Would you rather have it on the third?
For an apartment transfer, yeah.
She needs.
Yeah, okay, so have it on the. Third and just the first meeting of the next board would be the seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
Yeah.
Two and seventeen.
So then June third and June seventeen, okay.
This makes sense. Before and after.
Right, so I'll post those then.
You'll send.
A couple of quick things, one being capital, we will make sure that we have, uh. A couple of quick things, one being capital, we will make sure that we have, uh, um, the, uh, capital request come before the select board. Right now, we're before the capital improvements committee, they they will be this evening at five fifteen and a couple more meetings they have, but I know in the past. We want to make sure the board is aware of what capital is going to town be, uh, before, um, we get into the May timeframe. So probably have that, or it might be the first meeting in May that we have that capital improvements committee will be done with the work that they're doing. And one other thing, I I know I talked to to, um, Mr. Sheen about Silver Lake and do quite a few comments there about why it's not an open and. We we are, it it it's very muddy this time of year, which is why typically we don't open, um, this early, usually it's right around. Uh, Patriot's Day that we open. One of the things I talked to, um. Uh, DPW about is maybe we can pave that access road, which is an issue. We'll have to talk to Hong Kong about it because they hate to have. Um, you know, impervious material on on, um, their properties and as a concept, it's a town property, but it's controlled by the Conservation. Commission overseen by the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission is obviously very generous with the property and. Wants it to be used by the public. So we'll be looking at some things there to see what we can do about maybe stabilizing that. So we can extend the period of time that it's open. It does close right around Thanksgiving and usually it opens. Uh, Patriot's Day weekend, which is right around school vacation week. Um, we do have some dogs in there. They're chasing geese, uh, two different. Um, dogs, one is a volunteer and one we actually, the service that comes by, if it's effective, we'll use it up at the, uh, ball fields as well. Uh, Tom Franklin is using it. Few communities are using the the service, so we'll see how that goes. But I know there was some discussion about why isn't it open and that's the the biggest issue really is is, uh. The soupy nest that it is, the first hundred feet of the driveway, but if we can stabilize it, put some pavement down, maybe we can.
Yep.
You know, address it that way. Um. And one of the thing that we're working on, and I I know, uh, again, Mr. Sheen is a a part of the MBTA. Committee and I I know Mr. Anderson brought it up earlier. One of the things that we're looking at is addressing it. One of the things that's come up is. We may be able to actually address the zoning by placing an overlay over existing properties.
I suppose.
So, yeah, so that that may really, i- if we can place it over the Charles and over the Curtis. It will, it will certainly reduce the impact that has on our community. Consultants working on the formula. The committee met last week, asked our consultant and I paid from a grant from the state to take a look at that. We think it's feasible and really will ease the burden as far as this concerned. To the point where we may be able to present something to town meeting that doesn't have an immediate impact on the town at all.
Yeah, that's what I spoke with the member of the planning board.
Yeah.
And, uh, and Nick.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and Nick's Nick said if if the issue with the the Curtis, there's actually room to build. At at the Curtis. That would fit the.
Yeah, that that. So, yeah, I I know, you know, we we've been meeting regularly on it and, um. If that's the case, I I think we present the town meeting and I think it'll be something everybody knows. Uh, where these units are, they're already built. The worst case would be if they bulldoze them down and build new ones, but that's not gonna happen.
Is there an appetite for the developer to add to the Curtis?
The, yes, they actually would like to play the ability in front there. So it's. We've been having good for us.
Doesn't the, uh, Charles also have room? Do they have room up there? I thought at one point they had, uh, land up in the back.
Where the parcel that surrounds the Charles, the majority of his left one. So we will identify that as part of this, but there's only a small part of upwards that they be able to build. Uh, we we we're focusing on those two because it gives us the amount of acreage that we need.
And I think it would have like the, I think if we do the Curtis, we'll have the, it's closed, it's right. Right up the street and I think it would have the, from when I was talking with Nick, it would have the least impact.
Right.
On on the community itself.
Yeah, and we're done.
And we're not, and then we're not butting heads with anybody either, right? No, no, that's the whole point. It is so basically, it's just we basically, we're gonna be compliant with the state. And then, uh, without impacting our, um, town, I mean, just we have, we have great work done, you know, in some of the last few years. On that matter. So just we don't, we don't need. I don't wanna say additional, but we don't really need more additional i- i- in this, in this particular. Come kind of shoveling down to our truck, you know, it's, I mean, we have to have another seven fifty, so we ought to have done that. So I think this is gonna give us a lot more flexibility and then, you know, it it's it's, um, it's all done. I'm still, you know, my my only concern is, you know, it was Mr. Murano reassured me as far as the school goes. Uh, my only concern is still the the public safety aspect of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big one. Modifications like what they're allowing us to do is in response to the amount of.
Pushback.
You know, pushback.
Uh, I mean, I just, I, I, you know, I just, again, I I can't, I I publicly want to thank, you know. Don't, he's Chief Fitzgerald and and, uh, Chief Miller. I just, I think that we, you know, especially Chief Miller. Uh, not not that either one of them, but with the with the, see seeing what Chief Miller is bringing to light. Is is very concerning as as a resident. Um, a- as well, again, that that engine that he showed us, I I think it needs to be deadlocked right away and replaced. So yes, um. Go back to the Mr. Um, um, training, it's, um, common because, um. We had the conversation regarding Silver Lake, so some of the conversations were, the questions were asked was. And, um, they were thinking, you know, some someone was taking their dog. Locked out, so the, I'm I'm letting you explain that. So basically we chasing the geese. So we chasing the geese and then the reason why it's not open year round because obviously it's super mess. And the parking is not allowed with it.
You know, can you just say something? Why are you doing that? You know, it it, I don't know what's wrong. You know, people, if you have these questions.
It's just cold, you know?
Pick up the phone and call instead of sitting on Facebook bashing the pound, left, right and center. You know, there's a reason for why something isn't open or why something is open and. And let's just take the time to pick up the phone. Dennis is here. Hillary will answer. Call any one of us, we'll answer.
And I think. Respond to right away. I see that people also where it's out of sight, out of mind and we have a beautiful playground at at the common.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
I mean, not that, not that I'm not saying don't use Silver Lake, Silver Lake is an asset to the town. You know, as as is our our camp park. Um, but I I think we have, we have a very beautiful, very well-maintained common that that I I I think is overlooked sometimes.
And if the farmer's alack was right, we'd know whether it's gonna be eighty degrees or whether it's gonna snow any.
You know, just put us in a bubble, just put everybody in a bubble. And, uh, and and also one more thing, it's, um, it's, it's, they were saying that, you know, so we we charge. For the Civil Lake and, um. And when I ask, actually, you explain the reason why I actually recharge for those tags, just to cover the cost. For, um, for when we, when we have the lifeguards available at the Civil Lake, when, uh, when the, uh, Civil Lake is open.
And it's only so that it's from the last week of June until Labor Day.
Yeah.
That you need, and it's ten dollars for the season for residents, sixty-five dollars for out of town.
Yeah.
Residents, but it's it's only ten dollars. Um, we pay a nominal fee to the Y. Um, they provide three, three lifeguards a day. Full coverage, ten o'clock till six o'clock at night. So it's a, it's a great service. And, um, it's about eight thousand dollars that we pay for that and, uh, it's a fraction of what it would cost us if we were having to pay for it.
I I, you know, and I I think it's nice for the the improvements that that have been highlighted over the past. Yeah, a couple of months that Jesse's working on and, um, I I think it really is gonna be a very nice, nice little. Yeah, place to hang out if you can make the beach.
Uh, yes, first week of May, um, first Monday in May.
The panel, let's stand and watch you return.
Second.
And Noel is a bear.